Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersachs?
Here.
Mr. Garrick?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Ms. Stevenson?
Present.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, that would be September 8th, 2009.
So move.
I'll move second.
Okay, Robert Lewis, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, that motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, we'll move on to petitions and communications. Is there anyone who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Guess not. Okay. Old business, I don't think we have any. We don't have any reports of standing committees or special committees. Reports of officers. Libby Tyler, Community Development Director.
I'd like to announce a second public meeting for the Long Range Transportation Plan. And this is for the Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study. The public meeting will be October 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Illinois Terminal, 45 East University Avenue in Champaign. And that is October 1st, 6:00 to 8:00, public meeting regarding the Long Range Transportation Plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Bill Gray, Director of Public Works?
I just wanted to announce that I'll be representing the City of Urbana in the Chamber Commerce Economic Development Corporation fly into Washington, D.C. We're leaving tomorrow morning early. Be back Friday afternoon. Basically, three items on our agenda as we meet with various congressmen and senators and others, and that is federal funding for Olympian Drive, which is certainly of interest to us, high-speed rail, Amtrak. And lastly, throughout Champaign County, various schools have been identified, including some schools in Urbana, for funding for greening the schools and kind of weatherization-type projects. So we're hopeful that we'll be successful in bringing these projects to their attention and considerations for funding.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to say that Champaign and Urbana have been voted the fourth-best college town in the United States, and that was from the American Institute for Economic Research. They didn't actually come here, but they based it on published information. So that's nice that we've been recognized for being a good place to live and to go to school. Okay, anyone else want to do reports of officers? We'll move on then to new business. The first item is ordinance number 2009-09-103, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana.
All right. This is a request from the zoning administrator, basically in order to update the zoning ordinance to match modern development practices for townhouse properties. In regards to parking and access drives, current zoning ordinance standards were really developed for single-family and duplex properties, and we have separate standards for apartments, but they really don't work for townhouse units. Townhouse units really, they have a similar built form to apartment buildings in that they're very densely put together, but they essentially function as a single-family residence in terms of having a single driveway and facing on the street for each individual unit. In the zoning ordinance, regulations for the widths of access drives are found in two places. Table 8-3 gives minimum and maximum widths for all access drives. And under Section 8-4F, there are regulations addressing parking in a required yard. For single-family homes, duplexes, and townhouses, parking may be allowed in the access drive within the required front yard, as long as that access drive is no more than 45 percent of the width of the property. This 45 percent width limit allows for single-family and duplexes to have driveways wide enough for two cars, all the way up to 35 feet. But townhouses are really limited by this provision. Townhouses and common lot-line properties are usually on lots that are a lot narrower than single-family and duplexes, usually around 30 to 40 feet wide. So 45 percent, this 45 percent width limit only allows for a 13.5-foot-wide access drive for a townhouse units. And that's really not wide enough for more than one car. On a single family, or I'm sorry, on a single lot that has multiple townhouse units, the 45 percent limit also fails to allow for more than a single driveway for most units. The proposed solution here is to allow townhouse units to have driveways up to 18 feet wide or 45 percent of the lot width, whichever is greater, and make that the maximum. So the maximum is 45 percent of lot width or 18 feet, whichever is greater. The reason for this is the modern standard in housing is really to provide a two-car garage and a driveway that allows for two vehicles to be parked side by side, and this is just possible with 18-foot driveways. This also creates more space for vehicles to stack in the driveway, which reduces demand for on-street parking and helps with traffic safety. So in order to achieve this solution, staff is proposing to add language to those two sections, Table 8-3 and Section 8-4F, basically saying that driveways for townhouses specifically can be up to 18 feet wide or 45 percent, whichever is greater. And then for single families and duplexes, it'll still be 45 percent. And for all these properties, the maximum drive width is going to be 35 feet still. That's always been the case. So these two changes will provide clearer guidelines for developers of townhouse properties. The proposed amendment is supported by a few comprehensive plan goals, goals that call for a balanced and compatible mix of land uses and densities, and goals that call for a variety of housing types, prices, and designs in order to allow for more affordable housing for families. On September 9th, the Plan Commission voted seven to zero to afford the case to City Council with a recommendation for approval, and staff concurs with this recommendation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Jeff Engstrom, the planner. Any questions for Jeff? Diane?
Can you explain the difference in definitions between non-conforming and non-compliant?
Non-compliant? Well, they're pretty much the same thing, I think. Well, well, non-conforming is, something is considered non-conforming, legally non-conforming, if it's, if regulations that govern it have come into place after it's been built. And I guess non-compliant is just anything that does not comply with the zoning ordinance, whether or not it's legal or not.
Dennis Roberts?
Okay, I think I understand the, you know, the gist of the intent, and it is to get cars off streets and onto driveways in front of the townhouses. And of course, in our country, we're enamored with automobiles, and so not only do we need to have our garages the prominent front-facing feature of our homes, but we actually have to have two-car garages being the front-facing dominant design feature of our houses. Often, one has to find or look for the entranceway to your townhouse because you can't see it, but you do know exactly where the car is parked. So since that's our culture, I understand the need to accommodate this unfortunate trend, which previously we've been trying to fend off somewhat by having at least 55 percent of the front yard actually look like a yard and not a parking lot. So I know that it's supposed to accommodate the future and the future needs of our community, and I'm not sure why perhaps we don't allow just a single curb cut and then have a Y-shaped parking pad in front of the, in front of the garage doors that would eliminate the cement ratio probably by a third, but we don't have that drawn up. We need to drive right into our garages from the street whenever possible. So I understand this, but in theory and philosophy, I really, really disagree with it because I, I think that while it's really convenient and everybody wants one, it's a really unfortunate trend, so I'm somewhat drawn. I have doubts about my love for this ordinance accommodation to the nature of future design in our country. I'd almost rather have the garages in the back or come in off an alley, but okay, we're doing this and we just love it, so I can understand why it's in front of us, but I'm not going to support it.
Anyone else? Is there any consideration about cars getting smaller?
Yeah, about that. Well, not really. We settled on the 18-foot width because that's basically what two parking spaces is. Parking spaces, we require them to be eight and a half or nine feet wide. So they're really, we hadn't considered, as cars are going to get smaller, parking spaces will get smaller, but I think if in the future we do update the zoning ordinance to reduce those widths, required widths for all parking spaces, we would revisit this as well.
Dennis?
I've got a question. Jeff, do you know what the dimensions and width of a car is? You were just talking about parking spots.
Right.
The length is what, eight feet, but what's the width of a car? Is it four and a half feet, or did you say eight feet? Well, we're not in the garage yet, we're still parked outside, so I want to ask.
The width of a car is usually about six and a half, seven feet, probably.
So seven feet, so you can get two cars next to each other for about 16 feet. 14 would be, there'd be scraping, but a couple more feet, you have a little extra room.
Depends on who's driving. Depends on the car.
Okay, Heather?
Yeah, in my garage, my dad parks and I park, and he drives at Buick Park Avenue, and I drive a Dodge Caravan, and, I mean, we have just enough space, so. And, you know, I mean, I have my van for a long time, and I know when he gets a new car, it's not going to be much smaller, so.
We also wanted to have some consideration for, to allow enough pavement for people to get out and not have to go onto the mud, especially with elderly folks or people with disabilities who need that stable ground.
No other questions? Brandon?
Yeah, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bowersachs, seconded by Stevenson. Any other discussion? Brandon?
Yeah, I would just say, I do understand what you're saying, Dennis, and I agree with you about sort of the plight of urban space in our country. I, I do think that it's reasonable for these driveways to be this amount. I look forward to more conversations in the next four years about open space ratio and about ways that we make sure that a whole lot doesn't end up becoming a parking lot, and that, that we're making sure green space is there. But I think for these, for these homes, this is reasonable, and I think the Plan Commission asked good questions, you came back with good answers. Having a maximum is good, so that we aren't going to let people just pave the whole thing over. We really do clearly say what both the minimum and the maximum are, so I support it.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance number 2009-09-104, an ordinance approving an amendment to the agreement with Champaign County for the placement of a newspaper rack located at the Champaign County Courthouse site, approved in ordinance number 2009-05-048. And we have Tom Corino here.
Yes, good evening. Briefly, this is merely a housekeeping item in that we are amending our agreement and the attachments to reflect the modular design that was approved by council on September 8th.
Heather?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Stevenson, seconded by Lewis. Any other discussion?
If I could just speak to my.
Yes, please.
The reason I can approve that, this, is because it's $4,000 and not $66,000, so the fact that we're saving $62,000 is, or 60, yeah, $62,000 is great, so, thanks.
Let me say something.
Dennis?
Yeah, I'm going to vote for this too, and of course, it's the logical thing to do. Urbana Stand kind of had a bad name, I think, too. Kind of a bad rap. On the other hand, geez, you know, we, good, you know, a nicely conceived art experience, which we almost had for our downtown. If it had just been a little bit cheaper, maybe it was made out of aluminum or something, we could have had it, but on the way it is, we can't do it, so let's be practical.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Next is ordinance number 2009-09-105, an ordinance approving a special use permit to expand an existing wastewater treatment plant in the CRE Conservation Education Recreation Zoning District. And Robert Myers is here to explain it.
Hi, everyone. Use the Elmo tonight, newspaper, if that's okay. Some of the concepts are easier to point to with the Elmo. This is a special use permit request to expand an existing wastewater treatment plant for Urbana-Champaign Sanitary District located at 1100 East University Avenue. And in 2001, the district issued a multi-volume report for the future of its facilities. And at that time, the Urbana Plan Commission and City Council reviewed their plans and officially endorsed the plans, and there's a copy in your packet of the resolution, the City Council's resolution. So that was followed up by, in 2002, Bana-Champaign Sanitary District applied for a special use permit to begin their improvements that were called for in their plan. And so a special use permit was issued in 2002 for the plant upgrades, and now those are actually, have been finished. And so the next phases, what's called in the report, Phases 3B and Phases, Phases 3B and 4. These are pending improvements and also long-term improvements, and so a special use permit is requested in order to make those improvements. I would preface this by saying that the improvements, there's not going to be an expansion of the actual area that the plant occupies, and there's not going to be any changes to the processes that take place. It's all going to be in the same area as the current wastewater treatment plant that's been there approximately 75 or 85 years. I've forgotten exactly how long. So there's not going to be expansion or a change, but there will be new facilities built. So in that regard, I really see this as kind of a housekeeping measure in order to follow up on improvements that were called for and endorsed in the Long Range Facilities Plan 2001. And actually, in 2007, the City Council was given an update on these improvements, and now they're following up with these. Mike Little actually is here in the audience, who may be able to speak better than I can about any of the specifics on the improvements, and if you would like to have any questions on that, I think Mike could address those well. But I would like to just finish by, if I could have the Elmo, please, so I can point out real quickly some of the factors. Real quickly, sewage treatment plants have to be located, they have very specific location requirements. They have to be basically in a low point in the entire basin, and they have to be located along a water course, so they can't just be located anywhere. This is really the perfect place for a sewage treatment plant in those regards. Additionally, there's been a plan at this location for 75, 80 years, and so there's been a certain accommodation, if you want to call it that, in terms of its location and its neighbors. To the south, there's a park, so Parkland, and here's University Avenue, Ambux Park, Landscape Recycling Center, and Industrial Park. Across Saline Ditch, the north, there's an auto salvage yard. There is some single-family residential homes in this direction. And then to the west, you have the National Guard Armory. In the southwest, you do have a mature subdivision that's been there for about as long as the treatment plant has been there. In terms of zoning, the existing zoning is conservation, recreation, education, and in this zoning district, a sewage treatment plant is allowed with a special use permit, and the plant would conform to the requirements of the district in terms of height, setback, open space ratio, and et cetera. The comprehensive plan actually incorporates the sewage treatment plant's location, and the future land use designation is institutional. And then also, as part of your packet, you have a site plan. So the Plan Commission actually recommended the City Council approve a special use permit with this attached site plan, and the vote was seven in favor and zero against, and city staff likewise recommends approval. And also, the Plan Commission determined that it met all of the factors necessary for issuing the special use permit.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Brandon?
Yeah, I support this. I just have one question for you, Robert. I wondered, through the years, how much this use at this location has been a conflict with neighbors? Do we frequently get calls about noise, odor, other things, or has, has this use been pretty well accepted at this location? Obviously, it predates many of the neighbors.
Right. Mike has more of a long-term perspective on that than I do, but I've never personally received any calls or emails about anything like noise or smells, but I would say that I know that the Sanitary District has held public hearings when they put together the Long Range Facilities Plan, and also these specific improvements that they're doing in the next phases will actually deal with noise and smells better than currently. Give one example, one of the tanks that's now open, well, there's what's called the headworks, I understand, that's where the sewage actually comes into the property, and that's the first point of entry, and it's an open facility now when it would be an enclosed facility, and I understand that, that's typically where some of the smells come from, or odor, I should say. But I do know that the improvements are specifically designed to make things better for neighbors.
And we mailed all the required notices, and it seemed like there were no protesters at the public hearing, right? Nobody came to object, as I understand it. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. We didn't have anyone there to speak. We did mail notices to all the neighbors, we posted signs, and we had a notice in the paper as well, and we didn't have anyone speak at the public hearing, other than Mike Little with Sanitary District.
Great, thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make one. I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance concerning the enlargement of the sanitary facilities here in our town.
Okay, motion by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Diane Marlin. Any further discussion? Brandon?
I just wanted to clarify that, yeah, this would approve the special use for both 3B and Phase 4, as it said in the memo, which, which I think is great, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrick?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are you going to do the lighting?
Yes.
Okay. Next is ordinance number 2009-09-106, an ordinance approving a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the City of Urbana, amending Section 9-4C electronic display pertaining to sign illumination. And Robert Myers is here to explain this.
Briefly, on June 1st, 2009, the City Council updated our sign code standards. One of the questions asked at that meeting was, are we going to be dealing with or provide limits for the brightness of electronic signs? We've received comments from some City Council members, for instance, and from the public, concerned about potential for glare, specifically for electronic signs. And on June 1st, I said that we need a little bit of time to address it because industry-wide standards that just came out a couple of weeks before that meeting, and we needed a little bit of time to evaluate it. Charlie Smythe asked, should there be a moratorium on electronic signage? Until that time, we said no, we were, we got it in the works, it would actually take long to do the moratorium, then we could come back with the proposed standards, because, anyway, to make a long story short, we're here before you tonight with proposed standards for maximum brightness for electronic signs, and in fact, we're proposing that the standards conform to the Outdoor Advertising Association of America's standards that they commissioned themselves, with Dr. Ian Lewin, who's a principal at Lighting Sciences, Inc., from Scottsdale, Arizona. They commissioned Dr. Lewin in order to come up with standards because I believe they felt like that municipalities were already starting to deal with this issue all across America, really, and they felt like that there should be one standard that was scientifically-based and that was, that could be replicated in the different communities. So that was where we started from, and I presented the standard to the Plan Commission, and they said rightly, well, what does this really mean, these foot candles, and what does that really translate to? It all seemed so confusing, so what I did was I did some field tests here in Urbana, and I worked with the manager at Burger King and also the Pines at Stone Creek Village for their electronic signs in order to measure the brightness, and they were very kind to allow me to allow, take measurements, and they turned off the sign and turned on the sign. And I will report, I would like to report that both Burger King and the Pines at Stone Creek Commons, they easily conform to what we're proposing here. Just as a comparison, I also measured the Assembly Hall sign. It's not in Urbana, it's in Champaign, and it's also a university facility, so this would not affect them whatsoever, but you hear that, that sign cited a lot in terms of how bright it is, so I wanted to do, be able to do a comparison. Essentially, you stand 100 feet away, and you use a foot candle meter, you hold up the light meter at 100 feet away, and you measure it with the sign off and on, and if the difference is less than .3 foot candles, then it's okay, and then if it's more than .3, it's considered to be too bright, meaning that it's causing glare and unnecessary distraction for motors. And that's what this is really all about. It's not, doesn't deal with the issue of light pollution or anything like that, those are for different ordinances, but it's really focusing in on glare and motorist distraction. And I would say that some of the images at Assembly Hall were definitely over the limit. Some, a couple of them were two and three times over what this, this limit would be. One of them, in fact, I could barely even look in that direction, it was so bright, I had this squint, and I couldn't even look directly at the sign because it was so. I had this squint, and I couldn't even look directly at the sign because it was so bright, standing at a hundred feet away. So that was about, that one was about three times over the proposed standard. Briefly, the Plan Commission, after my report, after staff report, they did recommend that we adopt the Outdoor Advertising Association of America's standards, but tweaking it just a little bit, because as a practical measure, as a practical matter, when you measure it in the field, there's a practical issue with how it's measured out in the field, but that's been, slight revision has been worked out in this in order to accommodate that. Essentially, the way the Outdoor Advertising Association of America's standard had it, the night manager would have to turn it to an all-white display, the board to be an all-white display, and we found that it's just probably not going to, night managers aren't necessarily trained on how to manipulate their images to be, to have an all-white display. So instead, we changed the standard to be, take the measurement as the actually, what's being actually displayed, the image that's actually shown, rather than a theoretical all-white display. But that's kind of the nitty-gritty details that maybe isn't necessary to get into tonight. But the Plan Commission, in the review, they recommended seven in favor and zero against that the city council approve this proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. The city staff likewise could first.
Okay, thank you. Brandon?
Thanks, Robert. I really appreciate this, and I support it. I have maybe a few questions that are kind of suggestions. The first is about measuring the signs rather than with a solid white display with whatever the owner has up there that day. I wonder if you all have, in these situations, a kind of a policy manual or a checklist of the steps when you go on-site and take the measurement so that you could, in a consistent way, manage that and talk to the owner about it and make sure you've told every owner the same thing? Because if we're not measuring a solid white display, but we're instead measuring, you know, whatever, they've got the Whopper, who knows what it will be that day? The Whopper's ninety-nine cents, and that's what they've got up there. It could be that the Whopper ninety-nine cent one passes, it's fine, it comes in as .2, but then the next day, when they reprogram it and put up, you know, that fries in a shaker, ninety-nine cents, that one ends up being brighter and is not compliant with the rule. So obviously, that's the nature of these kind of tests, but is there a manual or a checklist or some steps for how we communicate that so that we are clear with the business people that they need to put their brightest one up when we take the measurement, and that, that's the limit? And that other signs they may program in or put up in future years could be noncompliant if they were brighter?
Right, I thought about this, and probably what's going to happen, I don't think we're honestly going to use, need to use this very often, but just occasionally. And how it would work out is if we receive a complaint from the public, for instance, that a particular sign is too bright, and I, I would anticipate going out and measuring the sign, the brightness of that sign, and then going in and speaking with the manager and saying, we've received this report, could you please work with us by turning off your sign momentarily? And then we would measure that light level?
Okay.
And kind of do it in that order. That way, I think if you do it in the other order, if you say, please, first turn off your light and then turn it to an all-white display, there could be some manipulation during that process. So I think, I think it's better and safer. If we ever had to go to court, I think it would be easier to say, this is the measurement of what was actually displayed, not a theoretical measurement that we're doing calculations with, but they were actually exceeding the limits in this case, and they, they did not agree to change their light level. I think we would be better footing in that way.
Brandon?
Yes, that's perfect. That's exactly what I, what I was picturing. Some guidelines like that so that our practice is defensible in court and is not arbitrary. And a second aspect of that that I wonder about is about how you measure it when it's off. I know you talked about, they could turn it off if they have a switch, but in some cases, you may have to hold something up, a poster board or a piece of plywood in front of it. And I think the brightness or the reflectivity of that surface, if it's white versus if it's plywood versus if it's painted black, would actually alter the baseline reading such that if you held up a white poster board and then their sign, they might be .2 apart. But if you held up a black poster board and then their sign, they might be .4 apart. So I think similarly, that's another case where, as you go into the field and do this, I encourage you to develop a standard practice and way of doing it that we would just do with everybody. We buy a black tarp and keep it in our closet, and that's the one we use everywhere we go, so that we're not being arbitrary in, in the measurement, even of the baseline.
Right.
Does, am I understanding that right? And is there some way that we can develop a standard?
Yes, I think, my sense is that most business owners would agree to turn off the sign, and I think that only, very rarely, you know, or unusual circumstance where we have to just block out the electronic portion of the sign, say with a piece of plywood or something like that. That's not really an ideal way to do it, but if necessary, you could at least take some measurements that way.
Robert Lewis?
One possibility, I don't know how much experience you had with photography, but if you use the gray card methodology, you know, when you're taking average readings or something like that, they give you more, truer readings of the overall sign using gray cards. There's a series of gray cards you take, and you take your light meter and take it off of the card?
Oh, okay.
And you can get it that way as well.
Rather than pointing it in the
Right.
... direction of the sign, you
You get the reflection on the gray card, or whatever the series is, and you can calibrate relative to that. F-stops on a camera for you.
Right. Yeah, that's an interesting idea, although if you started doing that, I'd have to, the nice thing about the standards that we're proposing is it's based on this scientific study, and it's, that in turn is based on the, I got to get this right, International Illuminating Engineers Society standards that they have used, and in fact, our other lighting ordinance that we already have is, is also tied back to those same standards as well. So the nice thing is this, these standards are tied in with our other lighting ordinance standards in the big picture, and that's what I like about it.
The reason I bring it up, because they said, they alluded to the concept of using a white screen. And when they do that, obviously, they're trying to eliminate all the variation of the colors.
The images, yeah.
And
Yes, yeah.
If that is true, then obviously, if you take the same white card and bounce that light off it, whether it's red, green, blue, or purple, it doesn't matter, you're going to get a nominal number that reflects that sign. That's all.
Should have written this down.
That's enough to it.
David?
Hi. Your memo also talks a little bit about automatic dimming and stuff like that.
Right.
The, we don't require any kind of automatic dimming on these lights and on these electronic signs right now, right? The idea is that
That's true.
We take the worst-case scenario, which is whatever level of light they are at night, when there's going to be the biggest contrast.
Right. Yeah, automatic dimming helps. For instance, Champaign, the City of Champaign has a requirement that their digital billboards have automatic dimming, not their digital signs, but their digital billboards. And the reason automatic dimming is important is because depending on how bright it is outside, daylight, you need, the sign needs to maybe be able to pump out full amount of light in order to be seen, or overcome the daylight in order, just for you to see it. But at nighttime, you could go down to maybe 4%, 5% of its output and be perfectly visible, perfectly visible. But if you don't have that automatic dimming, you, you may be pumping out way more light than you really need, and not only is it causing glare and is a distraction, but also shortens the life of the sign.
Dennis?
Well, I think this is a pretty nice addition to our ordinances about sign illumination because it certainly does address my concern about these digital displays, whether they're going to be large or small, that they're distracting. And, you know, I've commented about wanting them to revolve or turn over the imagery less often, and we are going with, I can't remember if it's 10 seconds, I think every 10 seconds. But at least now, we're, actually, we're finding that the industry itself is regulating itself as far as the brightness of its illuminations and setting a standard which it can be adopted and comfortably adopted by the communities, and that's really important. And I like the idea of the automatic dimming requirement. Other communities have it, and if we adopt it, it's also going to help not only cut down the glare on different occasions where the sky quality is different, but it's also going to be, promote green sustainability for our community, because we're not going to be having a level, regulated amount of electricity flowing through that sign at all times, it's going to actually fluctuate according to actual need. So I think that's an excellent, if we're going to have these signs around, at least we're going to be, hopefully, adopting an ordinance that allows them to be modified according to actual conditions of the field. So that's good. I think that's good, and I support it.
Is there a motion? Okay, motion by David Geirig, and seconded by Brandon Bowersachs. Any other discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersachs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yep.
Ms. Stevenson? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion of the broadband financial options for the City of Urbana, and Mike Munson, Chief of Staff, has been looking at this for a couple of weeks now. He's got a report.
I've got a little PowerPoint 101 here, too, but I'm here to talk about big broadband, which I've been researching for a couple of weeks. I'd like to say before I get going that it's been, it's a fascinating topic, and Urbana-Champaign and the University of Illinois face some exciting choices in coming weeks, months, and years about how to best bring big broadband to local residents. A little background on the topic, Urbana is now part of an intergovernmental consortium called UC2B, which stands for Urbana-Champaign Big Broadband. It's made up of the two cities and the University of Illinois. We've applied to the U.S. Department of Commerce for 28 million and federal, 28.3 million in federal funding, and we already have a pledge from the state to provide 3.5 million should we get that federal grant. A variety of local governments have, are going to provide a 10%, a little over a 10% local match, with Urbana contributing 555,000 out of a total of 4.4 million. The overall project cost is 36 million. We should know by the end of the month if our grant applications advance to the next due diligence stage. Final grant awards have been pushed back a little bit. It looks like they'll be announced in late November, early December. This is all being made possible because of the federal stimulus bill that included 7.2 billion for broadband projects nationwide. The U of I is acting as the lead agency for the consortium and deserves most of the credit for putting together the grant application. The grant application is actually three applications. The biggest is 31.2 million to build a 76-mile network backbone with seven middle-mile fiber-optic rings crossing the two cities. The application calls for bringing 100 megabit per second broadband connectivity to 137 critical institutions like schools and government offices, libraries, hospitals, senior living centers. The proposal also calls for bringing fiber to the home and 11 underserved census blocks in the two cities. Five of those blocks are in Urbana. Mostly, they're in the northern part of the community. Fiber to the home would be made available to about 4,650 residences in the two cities, and it's estimated about 2,500 of those would sign up for big broadband, which would cost about $20 in one. The applications also include two smaller grants totaling about $5 million to create 47 public computing centers and to implement a sustainable adoption and educational outreach program for vulnerable populations. The U of I is going to operate the backbone network during construction for the first five years. The University of Illinois Office of the Vice Chancellor for Public Engagement is committed to contribute $60,000 per year for five years to secure internet bandwidth that would be made available in the low-income, underserved census blocks. The service would provide five megabits of symmetrical internet service. The grant application mentions several ways that big broadband could benefit the community. I'll mention a couple. I've got several listed here. The Urbana-Champaign sanitary district would be able to connect to its two, its two treatment plants, which are on opposite ends of the town, and it's seven pumping stations. It could be used for remote patient monitoring, diagnosis, and consultation with hospitals. It's also going to be needed more in coming years as people download more high-definition video, which I guess uses considerable bandwidth. It'd be difficult to turn down a 90% grant that links the community's critical institutions and also provides broadband to the city's most vulnerable populations, but nothing comes without conditions, particularly grants, and I think the two cities need to be aware of what some of those are, at least what I think I've discovered. I got this assignment a couple of weeks ago. Mayor Presson asked me to look into how the proposed broadband network would accommodate the possible establishment of municipal broadband in Urbana. She hopes municipally-owned utilities can save the consumer money while also generating revenue for the city, easing the tax burden on residents. And the good news is that if the city wants to pursue municipal broadband over the next several years, it looks like the grant would accommodate that. The grant requires the local network to be nondiscriminatory, open access network, where service providers can competitively provide services. This is like referred to as open access. But the open access requirements, which are required under the federal grant, wouldn't necessarily apply to fiber to the home that the city would pay for and build itself. Now, Mike Smelter, who's sitting behind me, the director of networking at the University of Illinois, and an appointment on this grant application, says the grant requirements would not apply to parts of the network that the city builds at its own expense. If the city decided it wanted to do municipal broadband, issue bonds, pay for bringing fiber to the home to the rest of the city, not covered by the grant. The city would control that last mile part of the network, and the city could, if it wanted to, could limit access to just being, you know, just having a city service provider that would provide internet and video or phone. Or it could, it could open it up to other internet service providers if it wanted to for a fee. I guess Urbana would only have to pay the consortium for tying into the backbone network. It should be noted that if the city were to do that, to extend fiber to the home, it would be very expensive. I don't have detailed cost estimates, but Mr. Smelter estimates that it would cost about $100 million to fully wire Champaign-Urbana, and the grant's going to provide about $30 million. So there's a lot of money left to come up with, to bring fiber to the home, to the entire city. And of course, I'm researching some of this. I talked to people in Lafayette, Louisiana, which has a population of about 120,000 people, pretty similar to Champaign-Urbana, although it's one city. And they issued $110 million in bonds in 2007 to provide municipal broadband. So that's, the $100 million estimate sounds about right. My personal opinion is that if the cities accept the grant, they're making kind of an implicit promise to the public that they're going to bring big broadband to all the residents in coming years. If we get the grant and build the backbone network and extend fiber to the home, and 11 census blocks, residents in other parts of the city are going to be asking you all the time, when are we getting big broadband? I talked with other cities, city officials that have municipal broadband, and they, they said that the political debate goes that the political debate goes from, this is way too risky, to all of a sudden when it starts rolling out to people, they start saying, I want it now! When am I going to get it? Municipal broadband locally here will be a long, a little bit of a longer-term question. It's going to take until November of 2011 to build out the fiber rings and connect the underserved census blocks. The shorter-term questions the cities face is whether, one, whether to accept the federal grant, if it's forthcoming, and, two, I think they need to determine if the initial network, just the initial network as it's built, the fiber rings and serving the underserved 11 census blocks and some of the other aspects of the grant, whether that can be built without becoming a drain, a financial drain on the cities, whether it'll pay for itself. The financial consultant hired by the U of I, I think it's Fiber Utilities Group of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, says the network would be cash flow positive in 2011 by $217,000 with income of $983,000 and expenses of $765,000. I do have some concerns about whether the network would pay for itself right off the bat, and I want to list them. The UC2B's cash flow projections assume 54% of the residents in the 11 underserved census blocks are going to subscribe to the $20 internet service, or possibly some more expensive services now being contemplated. That's 2,500 residences out of the 4,650 that would be, would have that option in this 11 census blocks. U of I officials say they're going to, they're going to lead a community movement to sign up residents, and the people will be excited as they see cable laid in the ground. I want to note that only 39% of the residents in these 11 census blocks currently get internet service. But the other cities I've talked to that have municipal broadband or are planning it say that after three years, they're shooting for, they call it uptake rate or subscription rate, they'd say they'd be happy with 28% or 30% after three years. Some of them kind of scoff at a take rate of 54%. So if we were only to get those kind of rates, like 28 or 30%, the revenues would drop by about $300,000, and what appears to be a profitable network would become unprofitable. So that's one concern. These neighborhoods are served by Comcast, and I'm not sure to what extent by AT&amp;T, but you can count on the fact that if, they're going to offer competitive pricing in these neighborhoods, too. And the consortium doesn't envision offering cable television or phone service directly. So some residents who may get cable and phone as well as internet through Comcast, they might be reluctant to drop their internet service just to get big broadband. So I worry that 54% is a realistic number. Another concern I have is that customers in the underserved areas will get fiber to the home, they're going to get fiber to the home for free as part of the grant. I'm not concerned about that. That's, that's great. But after the network's installed, let's say like after a year, somebody says they live in these underserved neighborhoods and they say, I want to get broadband service. Well, according to Mr. Smelter, they would have to pay $1,500 to get that service, or the city would have to cover that cost. So either of those alternatives isn't, you know, one, your, your network's not going, your, your customer base is not going to grow if they have to pay $1,500 to sign up, and, or otherwise, the cities have an additional expense they weren't counting on. There are a couple of other things, maybe not as big a worry, but I thought worth mentioning. From the $20 per month internet income, the U of I is proposing to have 35% or $7 each month go towards the UC2B sustain effort, the education effort. That's a worthy cause, but it also means less money for operations. Also, in years six and seven, the electronics in the network will have to be refreshed, and that's going to cost a few million dollars as well. So I would, I would urge our hard look at these budget projections in the initial years, perhaps by an outside broadband consultant, if the money can be found. My earlier memo to the council talked about retail and wholesale models, and I don't think I need to add too much about that issue. While the consortium will be offering retail internet service to the underserved areas and critical institutions, other internet service providers will also be able to offer services if they agree to pay the consortium $15 per customer. Most of the cities I talked to that have municipal broadband are offering what they call triple play, internet, cable TV, and phone service. And they were telling me that they really need that income. They, they need that $100 per month from every customer to pay debt service and operations. And most of those cities do not have direct competitors on their network. Some said they were open access, but I think when the cities offer triple play, it scares away competitors. So that's just what I was finding in other cities that have successfully implemented municipal broadband. A recommendation, a big long-term question for the cities is what business model they want to pursue if they plan to extend big broadband to all city residents. The retail model, which would accommodate municipal broadband, is one. There's a wholesale model, which has been tried in Utah in a couple of locations. That's where the city builds the network and then leases it out to other companies. Some networks are a combination of both. I think if the local consortium makes it to the next due diligence stage later this month, and is still in the running for a federal grant, the cities might want to consider hiring an outside consultant to determine if the network will pay for itself in the short term and what business model would work best for the cities, or the city of Urbana, if they want to pursue expanding the network. Laurel and I talked to Champagne City manager Steve Carter today, and he indicated interest in splitting the cost for such an outside consultant who could do a business plan/feasibility study. We have some initial quotes. They're not too bad. They're in the $10,000 to $15,000 range. Couple other observations, just some random things that I, that I ought to just pass along. Churn is sometimes a problem with municipal broadband, and because we're a university town, we might be more prone to it. It's when people connect and disconnect. Each time you connect someone and disconnect someone, it costs money. It costs about $100, if I hear. I've found that a number of the cities that offer municipal broadband, they also offer city electric service. So apparently, they have no fear of operating a city utility, and I think that experience is useful for them in starting up a new one. I've found that when municipal broadband is competing with an AT&amp;T or a Comcast or Time Warner, there's often pretty intense price competition that benefits the consumer. Most of the cities I talked to are offering triple play for $99, $90, $85. And I found that Bristol, Virginia seems to be the most successful city as far as, at least one that I could find, there may be others, in offering municipal broadband. They've been doing it since 2002. They have expanded, they're a city of about 20,000. They've expanded to another nearby city, I think of 10,000. They're providing business internet services to another 12 Virginia cities. Their uptake or subscription rates are like 50, above 50%. And I think they started a broadband consulting company that I understand employs about 50 people. I was also told, I talked to one of their officials, and they say municipal broadband helped them land two 400 planned employees. One was a Northrop Grumman defense company in one of their plants, and another one was a software company. And I guess that these two companies, their average pay for the jobs was about 50,000. So they seem, seem to be about the best model out there.
Okay, thank you very much, Mike. We have questions. Brandon?
Yeah, thanks, Mike, for looking into this, and the mayor for, for having Mike look into this. I am very excited to hear things that you found. I support the idea of using a consultant to do a business plan and a financial plan. I think we don't want to go into it with overly optimistic numbers. We want to go in with really conservative, practical numbers that we know we can meet. And hey, then if we get 54%, that's great. That's, you know, that's the problem we can deal with. But the reverse problem, we can't. So I strongly support that. I have two other questions, but if you don't have answers, these could become research questions for sort of things to look into next, or things to ask the consultant. My first question is, do you know about, in these other cities, whether they have all hired the employees and done the broadband service provision themselves with city employees, or whether there are other intergovernmental agreement models where, you know, the employees might be U of I employees or members of somebody else in this consortium? Or even RFP models, where cities said, well, okay, we own the stuff and the ground, we're the service provider, but we're just going to put an RFP out to find the actual company that does the disconnects and takes the customer service phone calls? Do you know if we have some good examples of those different models, us employing the people versus an RFP or an intergovernmental agreement employing?
The ones I talked to kind of built it from the ground up. A lot of them, like I said, have, have an electric utility, so I don't think it was all that strange to them. They also generally worked hand-in-hand with a consultant that was providing a lot of advice about how to do that. I'm sure there's, there's a lot of different models out there, and I'm sure some of the, I didn't come across any, like you mentioned, but I don't doubt that they're out there.
Okay. Yeah, if, I'd be curious to see what, what good examples we could find of those, and if other cities have done this via RFP, I'd be really curious to know. Or if really the successful model is for the city staff to be the ones to do it, and for us to hire, you know, internally or through one of the UC2B partners, the staff who would ultimately run it. I think we should know which of those models is.
I did talk to one consultant, who said not having a city utility makes it, he was frank. He said it's, it's a lot more of a challenge for you than it is for another city that has a utility.
And I partly wonder, you know, we have the sanitary district, and, you know, they're a great utility. We have partners who are excellent utilities, who already mail bills out, you know, in US mail, and have staff who you can call when you need to connect and disconnect. And so to some extent, we have some of that expertise, but in our partnerships, which may be another way that we could perform some of those functions that we might not want to get into here in-house in City Hall.
Yeah, I think you could do that. I think the, the grant envisions the consortium or the cities being service providers, and I think that could be contracted out if the cities wanted to, as I understand it.
My second and last question here is about, about the financial projections and whether we have included already or would include some business tiers of pricing. You know, I've always thought, we probably can't pay to run a whole network just on the backs of the low-income census tract subscribers. But, but if more people in town are paying members, and also if businesses, private businesses are paying members at higher price points, it seems, you know, if you can pay $150 a month or $350 a month for the huge pipe that some businesses need, that helps our customer base greatly.
Mike has a whole tier of different prices.
Ah, okay.
Yes, is this a true answer to your question?
Good. Okay, I think that's key, having a mix of people everywhere from the low-income $19 a month subscription to the, the really expensive corporate when they need more bandwidth and more service.
We met Friday, and there was some concern about raising more revenue, and came up with some different tiered pricing where if someone wanted to get 10 megabits or 100 megabits, they could pay more. So not just the 20s is envisioned now. I think there's a whole tier of different prices.
I think this town is perfect for that. I think, you know, if I'm a physics professor and I want to run my complicated chemical simulations, you know, on the supercomputer and see how they turned out at 1:00 AM from my home, I might be willing to pay more just so I could get the imagery faster to my house and sign up for a higher tier. I think this town is full of people who would appreciate really fast internet, even though they might pay a little more.
I think you're right.
Thank you.
Okay, Robert Lewis?
Thanks.
When you were looking at this research, did you run across what marketing strategy that AT&amp;T is employing right now in the African-American community?
I did not.
You did not.
Can you tell me?
Kind of interesting, because they are offering fiber to select homes. And I heard about it through a friend who gave him my name, because I'm in the African-American community. I said, I want a little piece of this, too. So the engineer came to my home, and we had a conversation about what they were going to offer. It sounded very, very good. Not unlike the big broadband concept. And I know in front of my house, there is fiber already. Okay? So I said, check with your facilities people and hook me up. We talked about price. We talked about, you know, I'll pay you what, $125, $130 a month, whatever. And it was interesting, when I started talking about price, I said, you know, what does this really mean? You know, I'll pay you what I pay now. And he said, you'll do that, but your price will never change. I said, that's interesting. So right away, I started thinking about what this marketing strategy is really about. And it seems as if, if you get a group of people that are paying $120, $100 a month, and your price never changes, they're anticipating a reduction in service cost on their end. Okay? That's what it seems like to me.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And if that's the case, the next group of people, they'll stay the same, okay, over their duration, and when they hook up the next time, those people will pay a price.
Were they asking you to sign a long-term contract, or?
This would be for, as long as I wanted to keep it, I would not pay any more at all.
But you could drop it if you've got a better?
I could drop it. So that's an interesting marketing strategy on their end, and the fact that they're in the African-American community is also interesting. But the problem was, I have people right around the corner can get it, but I can't. And I don't know if they knew who I, I am, or they figured it out. And they said, no. But it's, they've tried, okay? But each time they've tried, I've got to know. And it wouldn't be difficult to set me up. I know people in the neighborhood that are on the same street, they can get set up, but I can't. But that's neither here nor there. But the marketing strategy is what I was thinking about, and how they're trying to do this. And it's kind of interesting that if they can give you a number and say it never changes, but the offering was wonderful.
Yeah, from what I'm hearing from the other cities, the, the big companies with their own networks, I won't name any names, but they really, when, if you come out with municipal broadband, they will offer extremely competitive pricing. All of a sudden, bills may get introduced in the legislature that might do away with retail business model for municipalities. There may be court challenges. It was a bit disconcerting to talk to some of these guys and to, to hear the extent of the effort and how ongoing it is. Some, some cities, it wasn't too bad, maybe a legislative challenge or two, but other cities, it was all three. And not only that, there were AstroTurf grassroots groups that were running ads in the paper and stuff like that, so.
Well, I anticipate if, if this is, this is going to occur, this kind of strategies and these kinds of challenges are going to be out there. I don't think they're insurmountable, but the realities of them are still there. That's what I've gleaned over the last six months, basically, and as this thing unfolds. So just food for thought.
Yeah, thanks.
Anne?
Thank you, Mike, for this report. It was very helpful. I, too, would support having an outside consultant come in and take a hard look at the options here. From the beginning, the part that made the most sense to me was the middle mile, the infrastructure, the seven rings. The fiber to the home has so many ambiguities and so many unanswered questions and financial implications that I think we really do need to get a lot more information before we can make a. make a commitment to this. Some of the things that leapt out at me was this assumption that 54% of the underserved households would take up the broadband. The U of I is offering to subsidize 250 households out of the 2,500 that they're hoping to sign up, so with the 20 bucks a month.
I'm not sure that's right.
Well, $60,000 a year at $240 a household, that.
No, no, no. The U of I is buying the internet, those households that would serve them, those households would still pay the $19.99.
Right.
But that's a subsidized rate.
But that's only 250 households out of 2,500.
No, it's the whole 2,500.
Okay, okay. So the whole 2,500 could pay $20 a month?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, that's better. And the comments about the wholesale model which the U of I is promoting versus the retail model which seems to be the one that actually works, I think we really need to consider that. And the fact that the ones that are most successful are the ones that do offer both TV, phone, and internet as well. So I just, I absolutely agree that we need to have somebody look at these numbers. And I also think we should be asking the citizens of Urbana if they want this. Same way we surveyed the underserved communities, if there was some way to get input from the rest of the community, I think that would be very good information to have before we commit to this.
Dennis, did you want to say something?
I'll look at David.
David?
This has been really helpful. This is a lot of information in one place and it's really been good. The one thing that I'm most curious about, the thing that I have the hardest time swallowing about this plan is that it's built on the idea that we would be sort of bootstrapping from neighborhood to neighborhood and we'd get more and more people involved and it would keep growing. But for each connection, we've got that $1,500 hurdle. And that's a pretty big hurdle. And one thing I'd be very curious about is to hear how other communities, how did they work this into their plan? Is this, was there a connection fee? How was the connection fee subsidized? Because I'm, were there communities where you had to write the big check upfront, that sort of thing? I'd be curious to hear what the, what strategies they have because to make that indigestible sum a little more digestible.
I think most communities absorb that. Is that right? Well, the installation fee, I think most communities, they don't charge $1,500. I think most, that's part of the cost of doing business is the connection and disconnection charges.
That's what you get the loan for, right? To do the hookups? Dennis Roberts?
Well, this is certainly a lot of food for thought. Obviously, the community, you know, we're a high-tech community with, associated with, you know, some very important supercomputing models here at the university. And in this day and age, everybody loves to be on the internet and interacting with them. So obviously, we're going to be wanting to have good connectivity in our, in the future, no matter how we get it. So it's really interesting to discuss the whole concept of it being a city-run utility and to see some models that really work, or at least are, you know, starting to work perhaps, maybe the future will tell us.
A lot of them are only a couple of years old.
Yeah, this is also new, that we don't really know quite what will work. But we can only imagine that a request for connectivity would probably grow, it's just going to be natural trend of our lives. I am, so I think that we have, we have a lot of people, like Brandon said, in our community who are sophisticated and are going to want and expect that connectivity. And a lot of new apartments already have, you know, are really, are wired, you know, for, you know, connectivity already when they're built. It's very interesting that the university is offering to do such a huge initial five-year plan. I guess they're doing this so that, to enhance the grant application. It's kind of, kind of a charity experience almost on the part of the universities to enable these outreach communities to this kind of connectivity. I guess what I was sort of wondering is, do we assume, and there maybe needs to be discussion about this, can it be assumed that every community in these challenged neighborhoods have already a computer? So that they could enjoy indeed, you know, internet connectivity? I mean, they may just be getting cell service or maybe they just have a TV set. But I'm kind of curious to know whether we can assume that every low-income family has a computer in the house already? Or if they were going to be connected and it was part of the university's outreach, are computers part of the package, that they would be getting computers?
I think that would be a better question for Mike.
Yeah, Michael?
The door-to-door survey that was done in those census blocks, I believe the average computer ownership was around 60% of the households had a computer. And roughly 20 of those, roughly a third of those weren't connected on the internet that just had a computer, and two-thirds had some sort of internet connection.
So many families, about 60% have computers?
Of all the households that were surveyed, yeah, about 60% did have a computer of this sort. It was working, we actually asked, "Do you have a working computer?"
Yeah, right.
And in terms of providing computers, that is allowed for within the grants and that's part of the sustainability grant, which is about $3.7 million. And I think we have found an effective way for the university to be able to recycle some of its computers into the community. Naomi Jacobson was working on that with folks in Springfield. And it'll take a little paperwork and a little, like people talk to each other, but they're, right now, when the university has to recycle some computer, it goes to Springfield, we don't want to see it again. There's a way of doing that directly into the community, doing some kind of advanced paperwork and paying a small fee. But it's, it would still be worthwhile to do it that way.
Well, this whole concept, this whole discussion that the university would actually release some of its computers locally rather than return them to the state, that would be a first. And that would be against any policy that I've been aware of for the 14 years that I've been at the university where, I mean, they don't even release, you know, old cabinets, you know, filing cabinets to anybody. You know, that, these things are like sacred objects that can't be used by the human, you know, the human public. And so if this was, if this was, if this was a new trend to promote this connectivity and if we could actually break through and make a difference here, that would be an incredible change in direction for the state.
Naomi was prepared to submit legislation to make that possible. And the folks at CMS came back and said, "No, there's actually an existing process you can go through, you get a waiver to allow that to happen." The waiver process right now is set up as kind of a one-time deal. Let's say you have a school that needed 300 computers and you have 300 computers, you could do it at one time. We're going to seek a waiver to do it kind of on an ongoing basis throughout the year. And they want us to pay, there's a whole process, why the whole state surplus system funds itself, is it ultimately sells the computers and we send them to Springfield and other people for like 10% or 15%.
It's probably a foreign sale market. But now you're saying that they would be released to a school, but you're not saying they're going to be released to individuals to put in their homes.
They could be released to the consortium and the consortium could do what it needed to do with.
Because I think that to really achieve, create full benefit from whatever kind of package that the city puts together, we have to, we have to provide the tools in the house for the use and the desire to have the connectivity. And there's many, many members in the community that are going to find $20 a month, $19.95, rather a challenge. And when the university after five years drops its, you know, its benefit package and these community members have to assume the fuller amount of the package if they have to, if they have to buy into the $99 a month package or the $55 package, I wonder if that's, I mean, that's something to think about for the future, sustainability of this project.
That could be in our business plan.
That would be a useful thing to talk about.
That the city, do the cities want to subsidize people in the future to keep it going?
I want to, I guess, ask the other thing. If we accept the grant for the initial build-out, can we still then follow the second concept of turning whatever we get into a city-owned municipality? And do the two things merge or do the two things repel each other as far as directional concept go? If you do one, it limits you to doing the second in the future? Or you can try the first until, and get the rings going and then evolve the business plan for the community?
My understanding, and Mike, if I'm wrong, correct me on this, is that the fiber to the home that the city builds itself, the city controls that and can pretty much do what it wants on that. It would have to hook up to the network, I guess, and pay some kind of fee, but it would control that. The 5% or whatever, the underserved five census blocks, I think that would have to remain open access to any provider that wanted to serve that.
Well, you had two different models, open access and not open access.
Well, the city could do open access. You know, some of the cities that have no competitors say they're open access, but just the fact that they're there, the 800-pound gorilla occupying the space, they just haven't attracted any competitors. Some cities are, it's interesting, some cities are vehement, saying, "We paid for this network, we're not sharing it with anybody." Other ones say, "Oh, you know."
For a fee, you could have it.
Yeah, "Give me the right price and you're welcome aboard," so.
That's how they operate.
Yeah.
Now, is there any kind of discussion about buying pre-existing cable, maybe owned by a particular provider, should they decide to drop services and they don't want to be competitive anymore?
I don't know anything about that.
Are we interested, are we interested in other people's fiber optic cable, purchasing it to extend ourselves?
The cables that are underground that are, that could be available, mostly one from Cloud USA, and they don't necessarily go in, some of them go in useful places, many of them do not, and many of them don't have enough fibers within them.
It's old cable.
What we are interested in from Cloud are some of their spare conduits. They have spare conduits along Winter Road, they have spare conduits going under the boneyard, and there's places, and we're talking to them about buying some of their conduits from them so we don't have to duplicate that work.
I see.
They probably don't want to be co-mingling in their fiber cables just because they're not big enough for our purposes.
Okay. Well, there's a lot to think about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.